All right, it's Tuesday, June 30th, and the Millville Planning Board meeting. We have with us tonight a number of folks that will be sharing with us about some of their projects. And from the planning board, we have Brian Malali, Chris True, and we should be joined momentarily by two of our other members. Why don't we start with Seven Providence Street? I think I saw him on the line. Matthew?
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay.
So I think, Matthew, you had reached out to Sarah about an amendment to your current special permit. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
I was just looking to add the business name. That's, I think that was the easiest way to go with everything because everything is the same. Nothing's really changed. I just wanted to add a six-letter business name to it if I could. That's what I was told I should probably do.
Is to amend the special permit with a different business name?
Add, just to add a name.
What's the name that you're looking to add?
So it'd be Ruffar Inc.
So I don't have your special permit.
And where?
Go ahead.
Where was it stated that you had to add a name? Is your M&amp;J Home Improvements now?
Correct. It's still that. You had M&amp;J disposal.
This is something that we can't vote on tonight, correct?
No, we can't.
Sorry. Thank you.
But I'm thinking that we probably have to have this in writing someplace. So, Matthew, have you submitted like a letter to Sarah or to the board? Maybe I missed it or?
Or we do an email?
Yeah, I think that could probably work. Sarah, do you have any advice on that?
Yeah, so my advice would be, Matthew, if you want to just send me an email summarizing to which part of the permit you want to add the new business name, I can draft up the amendment. And then at the next meeting, the board can just decide. The primary thing is that the board needs to decide whether this would be a minor or major amendment. And if it's a minor amendment, then you just need to vote to change the special permit.
Yep. I remember that. I remember you telling me this. Yep. And I'll do the email.
And the special permit that you currently had in place had some conditions on it that I think were coming up on being due. Is that correct, too?
Yeah, I think the owner of the property is doing, getting stuff done. That's part of his, part of the bargain, I guess you could say. His part of the ordeal, which is landscape.
Yeah, that's the site plan part of it. Correct?
The owner of the building would have the responsibilities with the conditions on the site plan. But I think there were some conditions in special permit as well. Might be good for us to just review that anyway. Okay, so, Matthew, you're going to submit an email over to Sarah, and we'll get you on to the agenda for our next meeting. And we'll be able to let you know then if it's a major or minor update to the special permit that you currently have.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Hey, Josh.
Thank you.
Dustin, are you there?
I am here.
Perfect. Dustin, have you gotten sworn in since you got elected?
I have.
Okay, perfect. All right, we're going to just wait like 30 seconds. And then I'll hear a motion to open the public hearing for 132 Thayer Street.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for 132 Thayer Street.
A second there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Young, there you are. You want to, because we're live, give a quick overview of the project that you're working on?
Well, I bought this house back in February 5th this year. I bought it under the understanding that there was a previous zoning violation on the previous owner on the initiative that did. I had spoken with a bunch of people down at the town. Lincoln Barber being one of them advised me that I was buying it. I was going to go through with the purchase anyways. And then as soon as I, you know, made the purchase, I was going to apply for the special permit for the in-law apartment. And that's what I'm here doing now, is getting the permit to make it a legal in-law. Currently, it's me and my parents and my girlfriend that live here. I live on one side, they live on the other. And we've been here for almost six months now. So I'm just trying to do it the right way, make it legal, so that I can do some work on my side of the house, knock down a wall in between two bedrooms to bring it up to code with the Health Department and the Septic.
Gotcha. I know that Sarah sent out a packet to everybody that has the application and some of the history behind this project, including a letter that we had gotten from Lincoln back at the beginning when this project had kind of started. And then another one that he sent to us all on June 8th, where he has, at length, explained where we're at with the project and that he believes that, to the best of his knowledge, Mr. Young has done all the things that has been asked of him and wanted to make sure that we knew that as the Building Department, he supports us moving forward with this application. Did anybody not have a chance to read the letter, the packet, or the letters from Lincoln? Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Young?
This in-law apartment is existing currently, correct?
Yeah, it's already, it's been here for, I think, almost 10 years.
And this came about because you wanted to do some work and the builder commissioner viewed your property or something, your application?
No, I knew about it going in. I've been, I spent quite a bit of time looking for a house with an in-law. I lived in Blackstone before, and I wanted to stay in the area. So I was pretty adamant about wanting to purchase this house and doing whatever I have to do to make it legal so that I can go forward now and in the future with getting any building permits that I may need.
Okay, excellent.
Cole, how big is the in-law apartment? Do you know the square footage?
It's either identical, identical in size or slightly smaller in size than the main house. So I think it's what, 1983, 1983 square feet, something like that roughly? So I want to say that the in-law is slightly, just basically cut it in half and knock 100 square feet off, I believe. It's slightly smaller.
I don't have any further questions.
Yeah. I don't see that we have anybody from the general public joining us related to this. Tim, would we know if anybody was watching and had a question?
I posted on the chat if anyone has a question to chime in, but no one's watching.
Okay. All right, if nobody has any other questions, I'll hear a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on 132 Thayer Street.
A second there.
All in favor? I'll hear a motion to move forward with the special permit, regret the special permit.
Make a motion to move forward with the special permit.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, congratulations. We'll get to, we'll get the paperwork signed. And Sarah, we can figure out how we can get this over to him.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll be in touch with that piece of it over email. I know it's just coordinating with the town hall to be able to pick up time.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Now, I have one question now. So since it's been approved, now am I able to go and get the building permit to satisfy the bank this week?
I don't have that answer.
My knowledge, I believe there, and maybe Sarah could correct me, I believe there's a 20-day appeal process.
Appeal period.
Unfortunately.
20-day appeal period.
And that 20 days doesn't start until the town clerk receives our paperwork. So that could be, you know, 25 days from here. And then, once it's done, then you need to pick up the paperwork. We get you the paperwork. And I don't know how the registry of deeds is working either. But then that needs to get filed there. I'm sure there's special grace periods or something in line for that right now.
Okay, yeah, because I was under the understanding that Lincoln said, once I was approved, he would be able to issue me my building permit immediately.
He might, yeah. I can't speak for him, so he.
Okay, all right, all right. Yeah, because my deadline with the bank is August 5th. So I don't think I'm going to be able to complete a project within a week of after getting the actual special permit in hand. That's why I was just curious. I'll call Lincoln tomorrow and ask him.
Yeah, he'll probably have more information on that piece of it and might even have some information about like, can you get a letter or something that, to help move it along?
Yeah. Excellent, okay. All right, well, thank you very much, guys.
All right, thank you.
You all set with me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, I know we have a few other folks on the line with some projects that you've talked to them about. Do you want to kind of talk about who's here?
Sure, so I'll provide a brief update on, I think I see Patrick McCarty on here. So I'll start with 196 Central Street. That's an application for site plan review and special permit for the proposed development of a 5,600-square-foot commercial building. The applicants are the owners, Jody and Dave Connolly. And the application was prepared by McCarty Engineering. The site is majority commercial business, but a portion of the site is village residential. The building will be predominantly used as a warehouse facility with portions being occupied by an office. And the parking areas have been segmented to provide parking for staff and visitors in the front with a second area in the rear for employees. The total site disturbance is estimated to be about 42,600 square feet. That application, to my understanding, is complete. And I believe that the board would like to move forward with scheduling that hearing. Patrick, I invite you to cover anything that I missed in that summary.
No, thank you. And we fully understand that things are very difficult right now with COVID and Zoom meetings. And, you know, we're going through this in every community that we work in. That being said, we submitted back in March for this. And the Connollys had really hoped that we would be in the ground by now. So I understand there's a process that needs to be followed. But if there's anything that we can do to help move it along swiftly, they're excited to build their building and get their business into Millville. So, like I said, anything that we can do on our end. We already submitted the Septic Plan to the Board of Health, and they've already approved it. We're actually a design-build company, so we self-perform the civil engineering site work and then act as a general contractor on the building. So my own staff would be doing the site work and building construction. So all we need to do is pay our installers' permit fee, and the Septic's ready to go. So it's really getting through site plan approval and then building permit, and we can get rolling.
Great, so Sarah, the quickest we can get the site plan public hearing would be roughly
probably. So if the board wants to stick with the second and fourth Thursday schedule, it would be July 23rd, I believe, would be the fourth Thursday. That would give us time to get it advertised in the Telegram and Gazette for two weeks prior.
And we checked with Tim, I think he said the 23rd was available. We generally have been meeting on Mondays. I'm not sure if Thursdays is something that we can make work for the folks that are on the call. Could we make the 23rd work?
We're not going to go to the second or third Mondays of the month? Because I know that we're better with some of the members.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of getting at. If we want to do it on a Monday, the closest that we could do it would be the 27th. Because we can't, we can't have a meeting at the Board of Selectment on the 20th. So the earliest that we'd be able to do it on a Monday would be the 27th. If we made the exception to meet on a Thursday for this particular thing, it would be the 23rd.
Yep.
Yeah, obviously, we prefer the sooner the better. And then, you know, like Sarah said, it's pretty straightforward. It's a 5,600-square-foot building, minor parking, grading and drainage. Is this something that you would peer review or just the board reviews it?
This is generally, I think in the past, we've just had the board review it. Brian, do you have experience with this type of project?
No, actually, I haven't sat on the board when we've had anything like this.
Yeah.
I know when they came, you came to us quite some time ago with preliminary plan. I was very impressed and happy with everything you presented then.
Thanks, yeah. It's essentially the same plan.
Yeah.
More detail.
You're professionals, and I mean, it looked like it was well put together. And obviously, as long as it fits within our zoning and guidelines and I don't have a problem with it at all. On the other side of it, I know we spoke back when we met the first time. My other hat is the Highway Department. I will want to be involved with your curb cut.
Oh, yeah, I'm well aware. I can't mess up that granite curb.
You're about a week, a couple of days too late.
We tried. COVID messed it up for everybody.
Yep.
Sarah, in working with other towns, would you, have you seen that the board would review a project of this sort or do peer review?
It's really at the discretion of the board. I think for a project this size, I certainly see a lot of boards that don't go out to peer review. Typically, I see peer reviews used more when there are significant stormwater concerns. And there was a drainage, the drainage calculations were submitted as part of the application package. I think if the board is comfortable that there aren't significant stormwater concerns, it would be fine for the board to review.
Yeah, and again, there's, I'm personally fine with just us kind of reviewing it because there are the building officials that are going to look at this. Again, they are, you know, professionals doing this. So, I mean, that's just my personal opinion, but.
I feel similarly. Unless anybody has any thoughts in a different direction, I would feel comfortable having this just go before the board.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And we'll see you on the 23rd at 6:00 PM? With the meeting.
Can we do the 23rd? Brian, can you do the 23rd?
And that's obviously of July. Yes.
Okay. Actually, I should double check my calendar, but, um, Justin, Chris?
I can at this moment, that's really close to my wife's due date. So obviously, kind of subject could change. But at this point, you know, I don't see an issue with it.
All right.
Obviously, you know, if I see an issue, I'll let you know, you know, as soon as I know.
Thanks. It'll be good news, though, hopefully.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Sarah, let's move forward then with the 23rd.
Okay, then Patrick, I will be in touch with you and with the applicant with the public notice, just for your review. And I'll get that in the Telegram and get that this week.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Right. Sarah, wasn't there a project that we were talking about tonight?
Mr. Hertzau wanted to talk about sidewalk repairs. And I don't see him on here unless he's on the phone, and I can't see him.
Yeah.
I believe that might have been in regards. It, I'm sorry, is he on the line?
No, he isn't.
Okay.
Was he given a specific time earlier?
He was. He was given all of this information to log on to the meeting, and he was given the time of the meeting as well. That being said, Brian, what you're referring to is the agenda says that he's on at 5:00 and that we should wait till 6:50?
I'm not saying that, but that's where he is.
In regards to the 23rd, I know that one of the emails, I think this week or last week, said there are a couple of applications that have come in. So are we going to try to do a couple hearings on that same night? Or what's the, I guess, what's the plan?
What is the board's comfort level with doing a couple of hearings on the same night? Because I think we have three applications that we could hear on the 23rd, if you are comfortable with that.
I would prefer to get as many done at once if possible.
Agreed.
Richard just.
Okay. Great. So I can also work with the other two applications if it would be useful for me to summarize those. I can do that. One is a special permit for an accessory apartment at 51 West Street, I believe. Yeah, 51 West Street. And the other is for site plan review and special permit. The applicant is Elliot Holdings, which is Richard Copeland of Copeland Roofing, for some light renovations of the existing building at 190 Central Street.
Okay, now, we gotta, do we need to have some kind of, is it publicized special hearing for Seven Providence? Or is that just on the agenda for a vote to amend his existing special permit?
If the board does not view that as a major amendment, it's just a vote. If the board was of the opinion that it was a major amendment, then it would require a new hearing, a new notice. But if you all feel that it's minor, then it can just be a vote.
Okay. So we have 190 Central, 51 West Street.
And 196.
196.
How do I jump in? How do I jump in?
You're on, Richard.
You're on.
Oh, I'm on. I'm sorry.
We're not quite ready for you yet, though, so just.
Okay, I just jumped in. Sorry to track down a few things. Sorry about that.
Yeah, so it was 190 Central, 51 West, you said? And then 196 Central?
Right.
Correct.
And then, in addition to that, there was one other application. It was the subdivision application. And I think you had sent me a message, and I don't remember if I responded back or not. But that was one that we would look to send off for peer review.
Okay, I have not seen that application. So if anyone could send that to me, is that Alfonso Height?
Yes, and I have seen, it was a giant package, and it was at, it was at the Town Hall. And so I don't have a copy of it, but I know it was there. I saw it when it was turned in originally.
It was, yeah, I believe I saw that with you, Pam. That was, it was not open, but it was just sitting on the desk.
Exactly, yeah, and it was big.
And if my memory serves me correct, that was the preliminary
Yes.
portion of it. But nobody has that.
Okay, I can plan to make another trip to Town Hall and see if I can find it. I can also, I think the contact is Bob Boxen. Does that sound correct? I can reach out and see if he might have any materials electronically.
Okay. I think that might make sense to at least ask him for that stuff and maybe reach out to Diane one more time. I'm trying to think of, somebody else saw it with us. I want to say it was maybe Peter was there that day, but I can't remember who else was there looking at that big packet. But I know it's there. It's someplace.
Okay. And who do you use for peer review? Is it PEC?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have, I don't mean, sorry, do we have full packets for like 51 West Street and everything? I know you had sent over like a application, preliminary application and a copy of the plot plan. But do we have more than that or?
Yeah, so there's a full application for 51 West Street that I had sent last week, I believe. And for 190 Central, I did pick up the plans from Town Hall. So I had sent the application. I can put that all together in one email if that would simplify things, so.
Okay, because you did, you did send over, but I only got a couple pages. It doesn't look like a full, both of them.
Okay, I will confirm and make sure that that whole, there is a full plan that there are a number of full-size plan sheets. I apologize if the quality isn't great. I don't have access to a full-size scanner right now. But I did scan those to the best of my ability, and I can send them around.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions about any of those four other applications while, before we move on?
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
Actually, I did just want to ask the board if you are able to electronically sign applications or if you have a feeling how you might go about signing decisions.
Yeah, so we are not able to sign electronically. We did not have the opportunity to adopt that as part of what we're doing right now. I think we're probably a small enough town that we could figure out, even if it was I stick everything in like my mailbox or something, and you guys can swing by and sign it, we can figure something out to get it signed.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
That being said, Sarah, um, do you have any guidance at CMR PC on steps that we would take to add electronic signatures to what we're able to do?
Uh, yes, I can summarize my very basic summary would be, um, that you can make a vote at a properly noticed meeting, so when we meet on the 23rd, we could set up a vote to accept the provisions of MGL. I think it's 110G, which allows for executed documents with electronic signatures to carry the same weight as wet signatures. So, that's something that we could add to the agenda for the next hearing if the board was amenable to that.
Uh, does anybody have any thoughts on that? Because I think that would be useful moving forward.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Unfortunately, it's a, I agree, but I, I hope this doesn't go on too long.
Um, yeah, let's add that then to the agenda, and, um, while we're talking about the agenda for the next meeting, we need to also add, uh, reorganization of the board. Does anybody have anything else that we want to make sure we're including in any upcoming meetings? Okay. Perfect, well then, um, uh, Sarah, Richard, we can, we can move on to, uh, the next topic.
Great, um, so, Richard, um, wanted to join to talk about sidewalk repairs. I believe this is in relation to Carriage Estates.
Yeah, Ri- Richard's on mute.
How's that? Am I on now?
Yep, now you are.
Okay, so, it's not my 4K, uh, the computer. All right, so, yes, uh, I met with Brian and we went over the approximately four feet by forty-six feet. Uh, I spray painted where we felt was the end of the damaged area. Uh, I was just waiting to move forward on that, uh, waiting till after the board met and, um, it was a unanimous consensus that I rip up that sidewalk and replace it.
That was between you and me.
Correct, that was between Brian and myself, um, and I-
I was there acting as the Highway Department, just to clarify, uh.
Yep.
I'm not speaking for, for the board.
Yep, and so this is the, uh, the piece of the sidewalk that we're, we were talking about a cup, uh, a meeting or two ago, uh-
Right at the intersection of Herto, Albert and Ronda.
And we have the pictures that Bill sent over, um, after his walkthrough to reference for this. Um, I guess, I guess my question is, is it, is it customary for the planning board to kind of weigh in on projects like this as, as they kind of go along?
Uh, you may want to check with Sarah, but my understanding of the procedure is, uh, the Highway Department makes its recommendations to the board. Board oversees the, uh, procedure for street acceptance and they make, uh, a motion is made to move forward on whatever recommendations are, um, given to the board. What I'm basically looking for is, uh, what do I do next? Um, I was, I had requested a copy of the inspection that Bill made. I don't know if that was the only outstanding thing that he discovered when he did the inspection. So, um, what I'm looking for is a, uh, written, uh, procedure to hopefully get the street accepted in the fall.
I believe that that was kind of our last issue thing was just that piece of the sidewalk. I think we were good with everything else, I believe.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
We were good with everything except the sidewalk and then with the conditions that if, obviously, we're having to wait until a fall meeting that the, um, that the-
It should be kept up the, the water and all that stuff.
Exactly, yeah.
So, based on the board's recommendation, we are only talking about that four by forty-six foot strip of sidewalk that has to be ripped up and replaced.
That was what we sent to you after our last meeting and, and I have that all in writing for you, um, and Brian, I mean, I, since, since this piece is from the Highway Department's recommendation, I don't want to, know if you want to speak for a minute on behalf of the Highway Department, but I believe that was the only, um, outstanding piece was, was that and to, to keep up the road before, um, so that we're able to accept it at the next town meeting when it gets announced.
Okay, so could I be sent, is there anything else that I have to do prior to the, uh, uh, the board recommending that it be on the warrant for the town, uh, uh, fall meeting?
A- as we spoke previously, the only maintenance, it, it should be only maintenance items, um, going forward. Um, once you do that sidewalk and you, you know what those maintenance items are, it's basically just-
Right now, it's mud.
You're trimming and cutting, trimming and cutting and right now, those, the drain is just, it's working overtime, so, uh, not, you know, nothing major happens, you know, I, I don't see issue with, um, going forward to the fall meeting, pending, uh, any, any issues.
Yeah.
The road's been rough and I don't think you'll see them.
Yeah, Richard, I mean, I, I think the process for us now is for when that piece of sidewalk is fixed, for you to let us know and then we can start the process where, whereby, you know, we would make the recommendation to the Board of Selectment.
Okay. And I will, uh, catch some quotes this coming week and I'll keep, uh, Pam and Brian in the loop of, uh, when it's going to be started and completed in case Brian wants to come by or one of the board members want to come by to inspect it.
And, and, uh-
Thank you.
That's something that you're working on now would be ahead of the game for any fall meeting that might be announced.
Okay. Nothing else?
I don't have any other questions. Do you have any other questions for us, Richard?
Uh, no, I don't.
All right, perfect.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody have anything else to discuss this evening? All right, um, I do want to discuss one other thing, um, since we, I know we have, we're planning for the 23rd to be, uh, night of special hearings, but I think for all of us, it would be a little bit easier if we could get back to a regular scheduled planning board meeting night. Um, and I know, and, uh, it seems like Bill wasn't able to hop on, but in the past, um, you know, the second and fourth Mondays had been working. Um, I know that the time seems to be a little bit, um, off for all of us lately too, so if we went back to second and fourth Monday, at least, is, is seven o'clock a good time? Should we be looking at an earlier time for the time being? Can anybody definitely not do Mondays?
No, Mondays are fine and honestly, I mean, if it's a little bit early, that's fine, if it has to be seven o'clock, that's fine, but I agree, like, we need to get back to a normal schedule and that way, you know, things coming in, we can deal with them quicker and, you know.
Yeah, I think having Sarah on board is gonna help us to have, so that at least we're in the loop when things are, um, are happening and, and paperwork is coming in, so thank you, Sarah, that's, that's really helpful, um, so far, um. But I think, I think just in terms of scheduling, especially when it comes to things like special hearings and trying to keep the, the public from being frustrated like, uh, Mr. Young tonight, which I, I don't blame him at all. Uh, it's been, it's been a, a tedious process to try to get everything scheduled, um, during all of this. I, I think we need to find whatever version of normal is gonna work for us for the time being anyway. Um, so, does anybody have any issues with Monday, say Monday at like 6:30, does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Is that early enough, Brian? I know you were the one that I think wanted them a little earlier.
Oh, I didn't want them earlier. Well, I need it, I need it later, but things have quieted down a little bit, so we're, we're good.
Okay, all right. So, let's, um, let's tentatively, at least for the next few meetings, after, after the 23rd, let's plan our meetings for the second and fourth Mondays at 6:30.
Okay, and just going forward there, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but I do have some, uh, hopeful, hopefully some time away in August and that would fall within one of those if we do that, just putting it out there out front, not that I have to be there if, you know, don't have a, what's that?
Do you want vacation?
I, I'm hoping just to get away for a few days.
I hear you, um.
I'm not flying right now.
I'll tell you that, I'm not flying nowhere.
Where are you, Justin?
I'm in Maine right now.
Nice, we're going to Maine next week.
We went to Acadia National Park today.
Very fun. Well, thank you for having me on, so that- All right, um, if nobody has anything else, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
We are scheduled then for the 10th and the 24th of August at this point in 6:30, correct?
Um, 10th and 24th of August, 6:30.
Okay, perfect.
And Chris, you're gonna let us know, uh, how it goes.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.